Uh, where am I? A roll call, please.
Ms. Brown, Ms. Crasbo, Estelle Sanro.
Here.
Mr. Freyas?
Here.
Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Mr. Sim and Mr. Langley.
Here. Let's all rise for the flag salute. And pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Freyas, would you read the mission statement, please?
Yes. The River Edge School District is a partnership of students, parents, staff, and community members. We're dedicated to providing a supportive environment in which all students can reach their maximum academic potential while developing a responsible citizens who respect individuality. Our goals will be achieved because curriculum and instruction are aligned with the New Jersey student learning standards. All decisions reflect academic, social, emotional, and physical needs of pre-K to sixth grade students. Cooperation and ongoing communication exists between the school district and the community. School administrators and the Board of Education work together to assess and adjust procedures in response to new mandates and the changing needs of the community.
Thank you. Open public meetings notice.
Pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this meeting, its date, time, and place has been delivered to the post office municipal building and the record and posted on the district website at least 48 hours prior to the time of this meeting.
Thank you. Move on to the first item on the agenda, which is the strategic plan report.
Good evening, everybody. This is the first of two presentations tonight. Are we going to do the slides on the? Okay.
We don't need the projector.
We don't need the projector?
Can they present on YouTube and then you just walk us through it?
We can do that. And you will, the strategic plan document is in the executive content? You can? Alright, so. Sorry, Brooke. No, we're not going to do it. Just show it on the, on YouTube.
Are you sure you get on the issue?
Yes. Let me know when you're up. Okay. Tonight's presentation will provide an overview of the River Edge Public Schools' five-year strategic plan, our Bright Futures Blueprint, with particular focus on the work accomplished during year one, which is this year. I would like to, we, just as a matter of fact, we're not going to vote on this tonight. This is merely the presentation. This will be, this presentation will be posted to the strategic plan website. And then if board members or members of the public want to contact me over the course of the next month about questions or comments or things that they would like to see changed, we have opportunity to do those things. And this way it's out there in the public for, between now and the next, next meeting. Are we good? Okay. The strategic plan is a powerful tool for school districts. It helps us align our values, our actions, and guiding how we prioritize resources, make decisions, and shape programs. It also represents a shared commitment among the administration, the Board of Education, and the community to support and sustain important work. But it's important to recognize that the strategic plan doesn't exist in a vacuum. It sits on top of everything else we do, teaching, learning, staffing, budgeting, adapting to new state requirements, supporting students and families. That's why the plan was designed to be both bold and realistic. We set high aspirations, but we also are grounded in goals which are achievable and sustainable. By taking a phased and practical approach, we increases our, our chances for long-term successes and reduce unnecessary stress or disruption for students, staff, families, and of course, the board. Year one was about building a foundation. I actually like to call it building a coalition, gathering input, evaluating our current state, and identifying clear actionable goals. The process we've made so far reflects the dedication and teamwork of many individuals, and I'm excited to walk you through that journey tonight. So, alright. This is overview of the process, and it's the roadmap for tonight's presentation. We'll begin by walking through the process that we've engaged in already, how we engage stakeholders, gather input, and shape our vision and goals. And then we'll start with this theory of action, which is pretty much, is the first wheel. And there are many cogs in that wheel, and those cogs turn the other five goals. And then we'll look at the goals themselves: academic excellence and student learning, professional culture and staff support, student well-being and school climate, communication and community engagement, resource and facilities management. For each goal, we'll highlight the objectives that were established and the activities were completed in this first year. At the end of the presentation, it's the goal to leave you with a clear sense of the district's direction, the process we've already made, and the foundation we've built to move forward with confidence. So here's the process. Form the advisory committee, which of course we've already done. That officially began in January. For the start, we, we made stakeholder engagement a top priority. We opened that, that first night with about forty, I think it was 44 people were in the room. We then conducted the, the survey, which drew nearly 500 responses. I think the actual number was 491 responses, which, when you consider the fact that we service 1,170 students, 491 responses is resounding. And I'm still very proud of that. And, and, and good for River Edge for, for coming out and making sure they answered that survey. That output gave us a deeper understanding of what matters most to people we serve. From there, we organized feedback into five focused areas, formed working groups around each one, and worked together to craft meaningful goals and measurable objectives. This was a collaborative process. One of the most important outcomes of this phase was the clarity it brought, not just to where we were, but where we want to go and how we're going to get there, but also who needs to be involved along the way. The process laid the foundation for a plan that's both community-driven and administratively actionable, designed to be implemented with a focus, purpose, and shared ownership. This brings us to the theory of action slide, which looks their plans, if you're following along. The theory of action behind our five-year plan was not just a schedule, but it's a phased strategic approach that helps us implement change thoughtfully and sustainably. We were currently at, we are currently at the launch point. The plan has been developed and will be approved next month, and the year one activities will begin next September. Year one is designed to be foundational. Since the budget for next year has already been developed, year one activities are designed to have minimal fiscal impact. The focus will be on digging deeper into each goal and objective, gathering data, reviewing current practices, seeking feedback, and identifying gaps. It's about building a clear, comprehensive baseline that will guide future decisions and investments. Each year that follows two through, through five will be in four, actually, it's three through five, will be at that point, will be informed by what we learned in the prior year. And that's why, although we've created the five-year framework, the plan is intended to be revised and refined, and it's a living document designed to evolve alongside the needs and realities. It is not at all set in concrete, but it does provide that framework and roadmap. But a key feature of this phase approach is the use of pilot programs in year two. The pilots will allow us to start small, test ideas, and refine before expanding. They help us build buy-in, focus resources, and develop internal expertise. Staffs involved in the pilot program is often becoming valuable peer leaders as initiatives scale up in subsequent years. Ultimately, the approach increases the likelihood of success, and more importantly, sustainably, while minimizing disruption or overload. It's about thoughtful implementation and respects both the urgency of progress and the realities of day-to-day school operations. Alright, so let's go to the goals. We're on the goal one slide, academic and personal excellence. This first goal is about helping every student succeed and grow in both academics and as individuals. We want River Edge students to be curious, confident, and ready for what's ahead. That means giving them a school experience that's challenging, engaging, and meaningful. Here's how we plan on doing that. Step one will be about curriculum and instruction. Taking a closer look at what we teach and how we teach it, our goal is to make sure that lessons spark curiosity, engage problem-solving, and help students think critically. In year one, we'll review our current curriculum to see what we can improve on and how we can better support all types of learners. Transitions and enrichment, knowing, we know moving from middle school to, I'm sorry, elementary to middle school can be a big leap for kids. We want to make that transition smoother and more supportive. At the same time, we want to offer more opportunities for both extra help and advanced learning. So every student feels challenged in the right way to get started. We'll take stock in what's curling in place and where we can and need to grow. Data and resources. We want to use information to collect, like test scores, progress reports, surveys, in smarter ways. The, this means giving teachers better tools to understand how students are doing and what they need. In year one, we'll identify the tools we already have and help staff use them more effectively to guide instruction and support students. The big idea here, here is simple. We want every child to seem challenged and supported. This goal helps ensure that learning is personal, exciting, and meaningful for all students. If you stay tuned, we'll hear more about how we do some of that now and how we plan on doing it in the future from Ms. Keller, who will talk, speak to us in a few minutes. Goal two, professional environment. Our second goal shifts our focus from our educators, to our educators and staff. We want students to succeed, and we want to also take care of the people supporting them every day. This goal is about creating a professional environment where teachers feel supported, respected, and encouraged to grow. We invest in our staff, and we're investing directly in the quality of our students' education. Three areas of focus. Again, instructional leadership and culture is about how we weed and work together. We want to foster leadership that's inclusive, empathetic, and forward-thinking. That includes making every, make sure teachers and staff feel heard, supported, and involved in decision-making. We'll ask staff directly about their experiences and look for ways to strengthen leadership across both schools. Strategic partnerships. We plan on strengthening relationships with universities and outside organizations. We can provide training, mentoring, and expertise. These partnerships open doors to professional development opportunities that we may or may not have in the capacity if we just did it ourselves. Staff culture and recognition. This is something every workplace can relate to. People want to feel appreciated. We'll gather feedback on how to better recognize staff contributions, create a positive and inclusive work environment. There's something to also note. This goal overlaps with others. For example, when we talk about student well-being in the next goal, that makes, that includes making sure staff are trained and supported and help students navigate challenges. The same goes for communication, effective leadership, and workplace culture impact, and how we communicate internally and externally. All these pieces working together, supporting our educators, is not separate from supporting students. It's one of the most direct ways to do so. Alright, goal three, school culture and student well-being. The third goal focuses on something that every parent cares deeply about, how our students feel when they come to school. We want every student in River Edge to feel safe, included, and supported emotionally, socially, and personally. Academic success is important, but students can only learn when they feel connected and cared for. This goal is about shifting, is about building a strong, inclusive school culture where well-being is a top priority. Here's how we'll approach it. Social, emotional learning and inclusive practices. We'll review what we're currently doing to help students understand their emotions, build healthy relationships, and make responsible decisions. We'll look how we can improve SEL programming and how we can make sure every child feels seen and included, regardless of background, language, or ability. Structured support systems. Student well-being isn't something that should be left to chance. We want to build routines and systems throughout the school day that reinforce kindness, belonging, and emotional support, not just during homeroom or individual counseling sessions. It includes special area classes and unstructured, unstructured time, like lunch and recess. The next element is staff capacity building. We'll focus on the adults in the building. We'll provide them with professional development to help recognize when students are struggling, how to support them, and how to feel confident in creating classroom environment that promotes well-being. And then, community partnerships and reflection. Finally, we can't do the work alone. We'll strengthen partnerships with families, outside experts, to expand support for students, and we'll stay reflective and open to feedback throughout that process. With the, as with the previous goal, you'll notice there's overlap with staff culture and leadership from goal number two. When we train and support our teachers, it directly improves the educational climate of classrooms and helps staff respond more effectively to student needs. At the end of the day, our message is every, to every child should be, you belong here, you are supported, you matter. And this goal makes sure it's not just a message, but a lived experience. In goal four, we'll talk about community engagement. This is something that we heard about loud and clear from families during the process. They need for better and more consistent communication, whether it's knowing what's going on in the classroom, understanding new initiative, or simply feeling more connected to what's happening in schools. Families want clear communication that's timely. Here's how we're doing that. Two-way comms. We want to make sure that there's more structured opportunities for families and staff to talk, not just at a report card time, but throughout the year. This might mean family check-ins, learning updates, or informal conversations that give everyone a chance to ask questions, share concerns, and work together. This includes systemic communication structures. This sounds, of course, technical, but it's very practical. We're looking at how to build a district-wide communication framework that clearly defines who we are and then when and how we share these things. That way, families aren't left guessing, and information is consistent from school to school. This might, this also includes software platforms. And then finally, community engagement. This means planning, events, creating partnerships, and hosting celebrations that reflect diversity and values our community. It also means reaching out to families who may or may not feel connected and finding new ways to bring everyone in. This goal also connects to several others. For example, when we talk about student well-being in goal three, communication with families is another big part of that. And when we recognize staff in goal two, we want to make sure that recognition is shared and celebrated in the ways that builds trust and morale across the community. This goal is about making sure families feel like true partners in the educational experience, because when schools and families communicate and collaborate well, everyone benefits, especially the students. The last goal is resource, facilities, and management. Great plans require smart planning, and that includes how we pay for and sustain the work. There's three areas of focus here. One, fiscal strategy. As we begin to implement this strategic plan, it's likely that new needs will emerge. New tools, staffing, training, and resources are connected to all the other goals. This goal ensures that we're thinking ahead about how those ideas, how to fund those ideas responsibly. That includes exploring grant opportunities, partnerships, and possibly referenda or questions. It's not about walking into decisions now, but being prepared to act thoughtfully and strategically when needs arise. For facilities planning, we'll take a careful look at our buildings and learning spaces. We've already started doing some of this with the facilities committee. This includes planning for future maintenance, needed upgrades, and accessibility improvements. And perhaps better use of space with an eye towards equity, safety, and flexibility for the future. One thing that came up in the surveys quite a bit was technology and infrastructure. We want to make sure that students have, and staff have access to reliable, up-to-date technology. We'll look at sustainable approaches such as leasing models and expanding digital access to ensure everyone is equipped to teach and learn effectively. It's important to highlight that the goal is simply connected to all the others. Whether we're talking about supporting student mental health, giving teachers new tools, enhancing academic programs, there are real costs attached, and this goal helps us prepare for that reality. We also want to be candid. Public school funding in New Jersey is a growing challenge. With limited state aid, tax levy gaps, and rising expenses, we need to be honest and transparent about how our fiscal landscape is being shaped, and we can't wait for a crisis to start planning. Yesterday was the time to start planning for tomorrow's emergency. That's why this plan commits to putting everything on the table. Nothing's predetermined, and we believe that responsible leadership means considering all the options so we can make informed decisions that are aligned with our values, sustainable over time, and in the best interest of the students. The goal ensures that great ideas in the plan aren't just dreams, but actionable ideas. And finally, I want to just take a moment to thank all the people who did help in bringing the strategic plan to life. Of course, Dr. Murphy helped facilitate most of this, so thank you to him, of course. All the staff members that came to any of the meetings, all the staff members that responded to surveys, the community members that turned out for all the meetings, especially towards the end when there was waning involvement, but there was a dedicated core group of folks who kept showing up. The administrative team was at every, every one of the meetings and facilitated many of the breakout, actually, all of the breakout groups. So special thanks to them as well. In considering every conversation, the question and idea, it really did help shape the goals and priorities that we walk through, and that's what makes the plan strong. It reflects what matters most to the community. This plan is really just the beginning. What comes next is how we implement it, and the board has those, we, these are the goals. We have the objectives and activities, and how we adapt to those activities. This will also depend on continuing support, that everyone who works here continues to show up, to work together, and employ the strategic plan. We believe that this plan puts River Edge on a path to where it's something meaningful, a school system that's well-student-centered, inclusive, forward-thinking, and responsive to the real challenges of right now, but more importantly, tomorrow. So again, tremendous thanks to the Board of Education, all those involved, the staff and community who supported this in any way, but thank you more for their future support and their commitment to making River Edge Public Schools the best they can be for every student, staff, and family. And we're excited for what's ahead. And that concludes the presentation.
Great, thanks. Any questions, comments?
I just want to appreciate the effort and the work that went into this and the commitment that you made to present it in such a coherent fashion. I don't believe River Edge has had a strategic plan like this in recent times, and just very excited that we have this in place and for you to lead this. Thank you.
Alrighty.
And if people would like to comment on the plan, or what is the process to do so?
I, I think it's easiest if people send emails directly to me. They, of cour, the public is always welcome to contact a board member, but operationally, I'm the one who's going to have to figure out their, where their comments fit in the plan. So they're welcome to reach out to me. I have access. You all have access to the same documents I do, so if, you can field your own questions. But at some point, if it does become a, a question about operations, how are we going to do this, then, then that really should be directed to me.
Yeah, so it's going to be posted on the website, and there will be communications sent out, just like letting everybody know, hey, it's there. This is when we're going to vote on it.
Correct. So I'll send a letter, I'll probably do it, I'll probably craft it in the next couple of days. We'll send it early next week about, hey, look, this is going to go up on the website tomorrow. It'll be there. But we'll point people to it, say, this is where it is. Please take some time to look at it. Take some, this is how you can comment about it. Reach out to me. And they'll have access to all the documents, especially the presentation, which I think is, Dr. Murphy did a nice job on the presentation, so people should, should look at it.
Alright, great. Thank you. We'll move on to public comments on agenda items only. Seeing as how there are no members of the public here, we can move on to reports. You're on again, or someone else is on for the superintendent report.
One of the things I was asked, and it comes up from time to time, about what is the, what is the difference between PDIA and WIN, and what, what the, what qualifies one for the other, and what are we doing in each of these things? I've gotten the, I've gotten the question from community members, board members. Sometimes staff has questions about it, so I asked Brooke Keller, who's here tonight, to put together a short presentation for us to kind of explain what, what we're, we're doing in these time periods, what defines them, how are we placing the students there, and then what the outcomes we hope to be. So Brooke has a presentation for us tonight.
Do we want to put this one up, or do you have, do you want to?
You have that one as well?
We have this one, yeah.
How do I put that on? Yeah, you can have the laptop back.
Do we need it up on the thing, or no?
You all have access to it, so you.
We'll just take.
Yeah, you can say where you are, and we'll go ahead and.
As long as it's on the YouTube feed, right?
Oh, yeah.
Should I turn on the projector or not?
No, you can just give the laptop to Ms. Keller.
That's the WIN, PDA program?
Yep.
If you're logged in to see the agenda.
I'm sorry?
When you tap on.
Put it up there. Put it up there.
There's a little attachment there.
I have to change here for YouTube.
Alright.
Do you need this back?
Okay.
She can tell you.
Ah, you can just do a little click, click motion.
There you go. Thank you, Brooke.
Good evening, everybody. So I'm going to talk about our WIN program and our PDIA program, and the data that I tracked from twenty, the school, 2020, 2023 to 2024 data and the 2024, 2025 benchmarks. So when I talk about WIN and PDIA, I'm going to talk about the progress that children, that these cohorts made on the NJSLA, in addition to the formal benchmarks that we have from, from Lincoln. So I'm going to first start talking about our, our WIN period, and really what that is. So it focuses on students who need more support in certain skills to ensure they reach grade level benchmarks by the end of the school year. Each period focuses on, on a particular skill for six to eight weeks in time, and that skill changes each year based on the data that, that we collect. So then there, this next slide focuses on the number of third through fifth grade students in the WIN program, period two, so like the late fall winter of the WIN program. That's taught by district interventionists in the 2023, 2024 school year. So during this particular WIN period, the district interventionists provided targeted instruction to 98 students from grades three, four, five. They also provided services for kindergarten, first, second, and sixth graders. The six-to-eight-week daily intervention was based on skill deficiencies identified through our Lincoln data, the second benchmark, which is often known as Form B. And additionally, 83 third through fifth grade students qualified for supplemental math during this particular time from the interventionists. So this slide five shows the ELA scores from these particular students who were in the WIN program for, for ELA. So in the spring of, so let me just go back here. So in the spring of 2024, students in the WIN program received ELA support, scored 46.3% at or above grade level standards. So this includes 39.4% that met expectations, while 6.9 exceeded the performance targets. The interventionists, it's clear that the interventionists have significantly impacted student growth by focusing on consistent data analysis and using that data to target daily supplemental instruction. So this particular slide shows the performance on the NJSLA for the spring of 2024 in math. So as you could see here, our targeted math WIN intervention program yielded impressive results with 39.1% of students were either meeting or exceeding state math standards. Specifically, 37.8% of the students met expectations, while an additional 1.3% exceeded the performance targets. These results also demonstrate the effectiveness of our supplemental math support services that our interventionists provide. So now I'm going to start talking about the NJSLA results from our PDIA students. So that's a different program. This is our after-school program. And how those particular students in this cohort scored on the NJSLA last, last spring.
Just a question can I ask now? Okay. So the, the performance is, is, seems really good. Do we have, I know it's, you can't do it for third graders, but for the fourth and fifth graders, how they performed the previous year when they were identified to participate in WIN compared to how they performed this year? When the NJSLA after WIN, does that make sense?
Can you say, ask that, ask that again?
So, so the, the students were, I, I, I believe the students were identified for WIN because they struggled in the previous year through a variety of metrics. One, which I'm guessing was the NJSLA. One, which I'm guessing was the NJSLA. Correct?
Yes. So now what I'm going to show next is how these particular students, this cohort of students in WIN and even in PDIA, scored on their benchmark assessments this particular school year. So third grade, like last year's third graders, here's how they're scoring in fourth grade now.
So I guess the growth is one of the.
Yes, yeah. That, that'll be the next part, is the growth of those students. Except not their NJSLA results, because we don't have that just yet. We just finished that. So for our PDIA program, which is the post-dismissal instructional academy, it's a weekly after-school instruction based on multiple factors, including teacher benchmark assessment results. That's our Lincoln data that we collect. In addition to teacher recommendations, it's offered to students who need to close learning gaps in either ELA, English Language Arts, or in math. So these are, the PDIA program is designed to close the gap for students who are almost at the cusp of meeting grade level standards, which is different than the WIN program, which are students that tend to need significant support in particular skills. So, so in the numbers, this slide here shows the number of third through fifth grade students in PDIA in 2023, 2024. It's a, it's a smaller group. So during this, when, during this PDIA period, trained teachers from across the buildings who were familiar with grade level content provided targeted instruction to 25 third through fifth grade students in ELA and 32 students in math. The period swaps. So sometimes the, the period for PDIA is ELA focused. Sometimes it's math focused. The overall, the overall after-school program focuses on second through sixth graders. But this data significantly represents students in third through fifth grades from 2023 to 2024 who would benefit from closing the learning gaps, identify through the Form B Lincoln Benchmark Assessment. So the benchmark assessment they took in the winter. So last year's spring NJSLA for the ELA, this particular slide shows how the third through fifth graders who were in PDIA for ELA performed. So this data reveals remarkable progress for students addressing learning gaps through our PDIA program. 64.3% of the students are either meeting grade level expectations and demonstrating significant academic improvement. An additional 4.8% of students who were in the PDIA program, they didn't just close their learning gap, they actually exceeded performance standards, which really showcases the effectiveness of this targeted support. The same kind of targeted support that our WIN program shows, but for a different group of kids. So for the children who were in the PDIA program focused on math, we could see that this data demonstrates remarkable progress for students who were addressing their learning gaps through this particular program. 77.8% of the students in the program met grade level math expectations on the NJSLA, showcasing their academic improvement that they made being part of this program. And an additional 3.3% exceeded the performance targets, also highlighting the program's effectiveness in helping students overcome some mathematical challenges they might have through a data-driven targeted approach. So overall, the PDIA program for the 2023, 2024 school year shows that a significant percentage of students met grade level expectations in ELA. Some even exceeded the performance targets. The targeted academic support shows that it's helping to close the learning gaps with the majority of the students who take part in the program either meeting grade level, mostly meeting grade level expectations. When it comes to math, 77.8% of the students met the grade level expectations as being part of this program, while 3.3% of them exceeded the performance targets. And overall, the targeted academic support shows that it helped to close the learning gaps that the majority of the students had. And because of that, they either were meeting grade level expectations in math. Most were doing that. So the next thing I did was I tracked these cohorts of kids. So the, the children who were last year's third graders, fourth graders, fifth graders, who are now the fourth, fifth, and sixth graders. What I'm going to show now is how those particular students who were in the WIN cohort, what their benchmark growth was like earlier this school year. So determine, to determine this particular information, again, I focus on last year's WIN cohort, who are now our fourth, fifth, and sixth graders. I analyzed their Form A benchmark data to their Form B benchmark data. So that was their fall data to their winter data. And here are some of the things that I was able to determine about that. Several students show high ELA growth levels. And one of the things that's important about that is our Lincoln benchmark, our Lincoln benchmarks are indicators of how children very well might perform on the NJSLA. So several students show high ELA growth. Most students are progressing as expected in ELA based on the benchmarks. And most students fall into what Lincoln calls typical growth range and benefit from support. So typical growth range essentially is the, sort of the common growth that kids might make versus high growth or the cluster of children that might like exceed the expectations. So overall, several students show high levels of ELA growth. A significant portion of students are making strong ELA progress. In fact, Form C for Lincoln is going to be finished up by the end of this week. So that data will be available to families sometime next week. And the majority of students that we tracked fall into the typical growth range, indicating that most students are progressing as expected in ELA. This particular information now shows the same but for math. Again, I tracked how this cohort of students from last year for WIN, what their scores were like from Form A this year to Form B and their particular growth. So the majority of students in this particular cohort showed positive growth from Form A to Form B. And similar to ELA, there's a gradual growth projection showing instruction reaching students at various levels. So there's, there's quite a number of clusters of students that made high growth from Form A to Form B in math this particular school year. Those showing negative growth currently in math are relatively small compared to those showing positive growth. So again, the majority of students show positive growth from Form A to Form B. And we hope that as teachers finish up their last round of benchmark assessments, that we'll see even more growth as they finish off the school year. Again, there's a gradual progression of growth rather than sharp drops. So that shows that instruction is continuously meeting the needs of students across disciplines and across grade levels. And again, the proportion of students that showed negative growth is small compared to the amount of students that are growing across the, the different benchmark assessments. So I talked about the cohort of students from last year and how they performed on the benchmark assessments this year. And now I'm going to talk about that for PDIA, for the after-school program and that particular cohort of students. So this particular cohort of students involved in the after-school program, so these are our current fourth through sixth graders. They, there's a significant cluster that showed high growth from Form A to Form B. And that's very promising because again, these are the particular students who had some learning gaps that were targeted through the benchmark assessments and individualized instruction for them and, and small group instruction as well. And we can see that there's a cluster of students who made high growth from Form A to Form B this particular school year. So 60% of the PDIA students in the ELA cohort showed growth overall from Form A to Form B benchmarks. And we hope to see even more progress as teachers finish up the Form C assessments later this week. Multiple students achieved 20% and even 17% growth. So showed a significant amount of growth. And this shows substantial progress with the opportunity for targeted instruction. And even though the majority of the cohort maintained or improved their performance on the benchmarks, there is a subset of students who regressed a bit and would likely benefit from assistance with strategies, especially as content becomes more complex for them. Slide 23 shows the growth that students, this particular cohort of students made on their math benchmark assessments. And again, these are our current fourth through sixth graders. And the vast majority of the students are showing positive growth from Form A to Form B of this particular school year. Many of these students are showing substantial growth percentages with even several students achieving 30% or higher growth on their benchmark assessments. Even though some students' scores went down a bit, most only dropped just a little. There weren't any significant regressions in their benchmark assessments. So overall, the results of our WIN and PDIA programs over time show that there's an overall strong performance on the NJSLA for both the students who are in our WIN program in addition to the students who are in the PDIA program. There's continued growth after completing these programs. So students who might have been in PDIA, the after-school program for a particular period, but not the next period of that school year, they are showing continuous growth when they are no longer part of the programs. They're ideally temporary scaffold. And I think our data is showing that majority of the students don't live in that program, but they're getting the dose of targeted instruction that they need, and then ideally they're moving on. And the PDIA, the WIN and PDIA programs serve different intensities for kids. And there's different needs. And both show regardless, improving sustainable academic skills for kids. Both programs have very different criteria and goals. And I think both the data, it's clear that the data shows that there's a sustainable, children are gaining the sustainable skills that they need. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a few questions. Or is it okay to address them now, or would it be better?
Well, I think we can do questions now, right? I think if any board members have questions, we can, yeah.
So the, I imagine the comparative results took a while to.
It was a lot of, it was a lot of.
Yeah, I find that. So a, a couple of questions.
Wait, let me start.
And so the NJSLA, so the performance of the students that participated in both programs seems like they did quite well. So it's kind of a two-part question. That's kind of like the post, the post instrument. But do we have like a pre or a comparison group of students that perhaps were identified or could have been identified for WIN? And how they performed as well? So I was, oh, yeah, it's my idea. So I was like, and excuse me if I'm misinterpreting. What I'm seeing is the results of the program. But what I don't know is, did they do well because of the program? Or did they just happen to do well because those are kids that were going to do well in school? Like, I don't know if the program did the work or not.
Okay. So both programs, both WIN and PDIA
Right.
have a pre-assessment and a post-assessment. The NJSLA and the benchmark assessments, that's separate. So when, when the WIN program starts and when the PDIA program starts, it always starts with a pre-assessment. And then on the very last day of the program, of the period, the teacher or the interventionist does a post-assessment. So there's data there that shows growth over time, which is outside of the NJSLA.
Right. But one of the goals, I mean, not exclusively, one of the goals is to improve their performance on the, as measured by the NJSLA. And again, it's standardized testing is standardized testing. So with that caveat. So I guess what I'm trying to get at is, how do we know that the WIN program is generated those, those positive results?
Well, I think that, if I could.
Yeah, please.
There's, using the pre and post, we know that the, that the students who were in, let's say, WIN, right, they took a pre-assessment, they didn't know these things. We did our eight weeks of instruction. At the end of it, here's the post-assessment. They've learned those things. I guess your question is, could they have learned those things outside the program? The answer is possibly, but without removing them from the program or having a control student that we leave out of the program with similar, similar achievement data going into that, that I call WIN cycle, without leaving that student out of the program and letting them kind of progress on their own and then post-testing them in the same way as a control, I don't necessarily, like, I don't think that's good education. But without doing that, I don't think we can answer your question effectively.
And I'm not advocating to keep a kid out of the program by, by any means.
I didn't say.
Just to ensure that there was clarity there. I guess, I wonder, are there kids that were identified and didn't participate? There are always.
Were there, okay, so the question is, were there students who were identified but didn't participate?
Well, and how are they identified? Like, how's the baseline identification? Is it teacher observation or it's?
Well, for, so for, so there's two questions there. So one is yes. There, there very well are instances where there are children who are identified for WIN or PDIA, and they don't participate, right? Either it might be that their family member doesn't necessarily want them to leave to work with an interventionist, or if it's the after-school program, they're busy after school and, and they, they have other commitments, so they're not going to be part of that program. So yes, they're very well, there, there's, there's always a small percentage of kids where that happens. And they get the support that they need in the particular classroom with their teachers. Can you ask your question?
Just like, how is the identification done? Just a basic?
For both, for both.
For any, yeah, like, how do we determine that a kid would need one or the other?
So for the WIN program, the interventionist, after the benchmark assessments are administered, the, the interventionists work together to analyze that data. And they look for the percentage of children who show the most need. So they.
So it is based on the benchmark?
Yes.
So this pie chart, if you took the same cohort of kids, would have been all not needing, right? Beforehand?
Yes.
Right.
Yeah, because that's what made them be part of the WIN program. So to be part of the WIN program, you, the children need to show a significant need
Right.
to be in the program, in addition to teacher recommendations.
Right.
For the PDIA program, that identification is different. It's the cohort, it's, it's not those kids.
Right.
It's the children who, it's the percentage of kids that are just below, just below the benchmark level. So they're the children who need a little nudge.
I got it. Okay, thank you.
So I have a question to, to go off that. The six to eight week cohorts, so if, that small percentage of students who aren't meeting, are they eligible? meeting, are they eligible to go into the next, like, do we potentially have students who are in WIN or PDIA, PDIA, all year? Like, are, and, and like for future, because I know this is like, we're evolving this program.
Yeah, yeah.
Those kids who stay, who are in PDIA every year, who are in these WIN, we're finding them eligible every year, we are really taking a deeper look into what those students.
Why that might be happening, right?
Right. Like, do we have students who are, who are meeting that WIN criteria and we're seeing them during the three cycles?
Essentially should be cycling, ideally are cycling out of these programs.
After the eight years.
So for example, for, for PDIA, so the after-school program, again, sometime, like, there might be a period, that's an ELA period, and then the next period's math. So if a student in the after-school program is in the, maybe they're in period one, but they're also, let's say, in period two, that would be because they're showing need in, in both ELA and math over time. And then for the WIN program, there, there, that is an ongoing conversation. The interventionists are very aware of students who, and very curious about students who are continuously in the WIN program, because we have to stop to think, what are we doing and what else might we need to do to support these students?
I, it's, I certainly don't, like, not, not want to recommend more work, and I do, I do see that, like, I wonder, and again, given that it's a standard access, would it be interesting to see how those kids did in the previous years, NJSLA, for the, again, the, the 4th and the 5th graders, for the 3rd and the 4th grade when they were, compared to how they did this year or la, last year, for those that did WIN? So it's, so there's a comparison there. And again, I'd be reluctant to, to, to kind of generate any conclusions from that, but still, that, that's a comparison that, of kids that did WIN. And on the same note, kids that were identified, and I don't know if you even track kids that were identified for WIN and they don't participate, like, how did they perform compared to those that, that did? That, in that case, would be a control group. That would not be a forced control group.
Yes, I suspect that those students are many fewer than you'd expect, and we would probably have to talk, we wouldn't be able to talk about that, because they've been identified, like, three students in the district.
Not a lot of students at all.
But we can talk about that, you know, as an exact for sure.
So I guess, I guess what I'm reluctant is, we have great results of the kids that are participating in the program, but I'm still not seeing that we know it's the program that, that did that, as opposed to kids that participate in the program did well. Does that, correlation, causation?
We do have the benchmark assessments, though. I'm, I know we're focusing on the data here for NJSLA, but the benchmark assessments that we give for Linkit and, I know we do DIBELS for ELA, that's showing pre, mid, post, and so that's where we're seeing growth.
Yes.
For the WIN kids? Oh, yeah, but for the WIN kids in particular, like, that would be interesting to see the WIN kids.
They're being identified by the beginning of the year benchmarks, right? So that's Linkit, not NJSLA.
Currently, we have the data from Form A to Form B benchmark assessments for these particular students, and so that data has showed that, that the students that were in WIN, and even last year's WIN kids, last year's kids in PDIA, they are making growth and they are on the trajectory to perform well on the NJSLA.
Do those kids outperform kids that were not in WIN, just based on growth, not necessarily based on performance? By those, that, that's my question. You know, like, are we seeing the outcome of the program by whatever measure that, that is better? And again, the NJSLA probably is not the best measure to use for that. But like, the growth that you did tracking the kids, like, that, that was, that was pretty cool, pretty awesome. Do we have similar growth for the rest of the kids to see if their growth outperforms?
That would take another dive into the data to look at.
We have the data.
We have it all.
So, okay, we have the research question, and we have, you know, we'll have Form C and we'll have the summer, and we.
The reason why I ask is, it's a, I, I, some background, so I asked, the reason why I'm, I'm asking now, this is something I asked, I don't know if you remember, when, when we started as board members. There's this very question about the efficacy of some of our enrichment programs. You know, many districts offer enrichment programs targeted struggling students, but it's always difficult to determine how effective they are. And so what I'm trying to kind of, to, to understand is, how do we know that it's, that this program is effective, or do we just know that the kids that are in this program are doing well?
I think that's, I think, you may have answered the question, but I think I have a way to figure out how to do just a little bit, one more layer of dive, and then do a comparison for you, and we can look at that very carefully. Now that we know what the question is, we can, we can figure that out. I can't do it right now.
No, I'm not, at the whole means.
But I think, so one of the things that, and I was, I had the opportunity to be on a planning call with Brooke and Christine, with Linkit, and to their credit, they, three or four times this year, they've engaged specifically with our, what do they call it? Is it our rep, our data rep, our manager, account manager?
Yeah, yeah, well, John is more like our, he's our school assistance manager.
There you go. Even better. And, and they have, they're going to look at certain things over the summer that, that will dictate next year. So if you, just to, just to do a little bridge for the public here, from the last presentation to this one, when we're looking at like Goal One, and we're talking about academic and personal excellence, this is one of those things, right? This is a very granular, student-centered, I, I guess I could call it, program that identifies students who need help in certain targeted areas, and then we go ahead and do it. This to me, and I, this is just my assessment after being here now for 10 months or whatever it is, this is River Ridge's secret sauce. There are very few districts have a, like a tier-three intervention program, to go, to use RTI language. For general education students, that's this A, measured, and B, this robust. And that, that sets up a cyclic environment so that students can pop in and out of it as needed. Now, just to answer your question real quick, I'm just looking at, I'm on slide 13, like, this is PDIA, you know, there's 18% of students that will likely be in it again next year because they simply approached, right? They did not make it, and these are, these are students who are on the bubble. And the, these bubble, I don't know, bubble programs, it's not, that's not a formal term, and it's not something I've ever used before, but the bubble program doesn't necessarily exist everywhere, and very, I, I think districts are trying it, they're thinking about it, everyone would love to do it but don't have the resources. River Ridge invests in this resource, and it is unique, and I believe it's, it's not everything, there's not, there's no like one singular thing that, that allows us to perform at this level. There's lots of thing, contributing factors, I think, that helps River Ridge's scores, but this is one of them, right? We, we took students who were not proficient last year, put them in PDIA, and 80% of them shifted from either a red or a yellow, if you will, to a green or a blue. And, and there are, there are districts who would love to do this, which is why when we had our, our CUSAC inspection, I'll call it, when they, when we had our site visit, the, the county office spent a lot of time with, with Brooke and Christine on this, because they don't see it everywhere, and when they look at our scores, they say, wow, this is pretty incredible. What are you folks doing to generate? This is, I believe, a major contributing factor to how River Ridge is continuously able, and it has been always, right, but able to show growth. When I talked to the Linkit, I'll call him account manager, he's actually, I think, he's the CEO or CFO, River Ridge has been a Linkit customer for about 10 years. You're, you're like an original customer. So I believe that being so comfortable with the tool for so long has allowed programs like this to evolve, where folks who are just signing up for, to use Linkit as an assessment, they don't have the, the programmatic approach to it. So they're just using it as an assessment, oh, these kids, they're collecting all this data.
Data warehouse.
And they might be doing anything with it. There's districts that collect data and data, and they have data rooms and walls, and, but if they don't have the programmatic backend, then they're just building a graph, and anyone can do that. We had a note about how this is funded. Do you want to go back to that note?
So that, that red to green is exactly kind of what I'm, I'm looking to see. And I, and I think it's, it's the right thing that all districts should be doing. This is data-driven instruction, targeted. And I guess where my, my end, my end idea is that if it's working, that's great. If it's not working, you know, what other curricular or pedagogical tools need to be inserted in there? You know, what do you see could be inserted there in order to tweak it so that it does perform at a higher area? Or are there certain areas, if you're able to, you know, to get more granular in terms of, you know, word problems or what have you, that, that need to get a greater level of focus? And so understanding, if it's possible to understand at a more granular level, the efficacy of A, the program, and B, aspects of the program, I think it would continue to enrich, for lack of a better word, the program.
So those are absolutely things that we're going to be, as we do this deep dive as part of strategic plan, we want to look further, deeper into this, into these programs and see if we can make them more robust in some ways. And I, and I know for a fact that there are, if you look at the ELA, we didn't have the success that we had in ELA, that we had in mathematics. I know for a fact that there is a small, there is a, a band of students that need certain interventions. The folks have come to talk to me about it, they've booked time, they talk, we're not doing this and we really need another body, right? But we didn't add a body in intervention this year, we just didn't have the money to do it. All right, so that's something that we can look at for next year as we begin to look at resources. Can we afford a reading interventionist for general, another one, because we already have one, but specifically one for students with certain skill sets that we know can be improved by another two hours a week for eight weeks, right? If that's, if that's one thing we can do to pull 20, any one of those 26% of those students that are in that, if we could pull them over, then that's where we should be investing our resources. And that will generate the kind of, not only achievement, but growth in a student from, from year to year that I think that we, we would want to see. And, and it would actually help answer the question even more deeply, like, look, we did this and these students made this progress, right? So that's one thing we can do. We had a quick.
The only thing I was going to say is, PDIA is an after-school program, so it's an additional cost to the district. Title I monies covers it at Cherry Hill School, and the district covers it at Roosevelt School because Cherry Hill's eligible under Title I, Roosevelt is not, but we do hold it at both schools, one at the cost through grants and the other at through the district budget.
Again, but first and foremost, thank you for putting the work in to develop that. It just happens to touch on one of the areas of my interest, so.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brooke.
Anything else?
As well, I think the balance of the agenda was self-explanatory. I did explain things to the executive members for board members, if you have questions, I'll answer them during the specific portions of each of the things, but rather than bully over the meeting, we've already had an hour, so just go ahead and conclude my report.
Okay, thank you. Board secretary report?
We just have the normal things where we approve the board secretary report, treasures, and transfers. You'll also see tonight, and Dr. Bernice, I thought you were going to mention it, was the Focus Grant. Do you want to explain the Focus?
We did have that.
Well, Brooke wanted to explain it.
Go ahead, Brooke.
So that's 600 and 6, 600, $6,630.
Oh.
We're applying for, for the Focus Grant, which Brooke is working on, so go ahead.
Yes. So, yeah, so the state advertised a grant for early childhood screening geared towards kindergarten through 3rd grade, and I'm in the process of submitting that grant.
Very short.
Very, very shortly, we're going to do Friday at 4:00.
Okay.
And we have really some very thoughtful ideas about how to, how we might use that particular money, one being investing in data meetings with kindergarten through 3rd grade.
Is your microphone still on? Sorry.
One being investing in data meetings. One being investing in data meetings for those particular groups of teachers, so they can look closely at screening data and have shared conversations on high-level teaching strategies to inform instruction. And we are also considering using, of course, that grant money to support the coverage of substitute teachers, so teachers can be part of those conversations in-house during the school day. And let me think, what else? Also, part of the grant will be about investing in professional learning for kindergarten through 3rd grade teachers, and how to look closely at the screening data from DIBELS in order to use some new teaching methods in addition to new resources that we have for the teachers for their ELA instruction.
All right, great. Yeah? When do we, when will we find out?
Sometime after 4:00. I'm trying. Not before then.
Yeah, but when do we find out, when we get it?
It should be mid-June.
It's a, it's a pretty, it's a pretty quick turnaround.
Okay, that's a pretty fast turnaround.
Yeah, it's a pretty quick turnaround.
We've already identified as a, a district that can get 6,630.
Well, that's what we're eligible for, so.
Oh, great.
The other districts that have last.
As long as we fill out the paperwork, you, you're going to vote on it tonight to apply for it, and hopefully.
Gotcha.
Good luck in getting it in.
Yes.
Because I'm planning to do tomorrow.
We believe in you.
The grant's always.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you for your time, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Board secretary, you're done? Okay, all right, we'll move on to president's part. I don't really have anything other than just to remind the committee chairs that we are, the next committee meetings, we're going to have to move to Thursday, the.
June 12.
June 12. We were trying to do it for the 10th, but schools are closed that day, so we'll be sending out updated calendar invites, and if you have any issues with those dates, just you can let me know, or we can reschedule them. Committees. Alethea's not here, I'll just do finance quickly. We talked about, I met on the 20th at 7:00 PM, Ms. Crossbow was there, Mr. Freyas, myself, Dr. Bernice, and Mr. Napolitano. We talked about summer projects, the bigger one being the Cherry Hill Boiler. The abatement's done, right? And they're going to do the boiler over this, okay.
Actually, the boiler's actually going on now, so it may even be done before the summer, which would be great, so then we know we'll be up and running and be able to fire it up by the 15th of October, which is the date.
Great. Good. So we talked, so a pretty long list of things we want to do over the summer. Thank you. There was an assessment of the sidewalks done, that's a pretty minor repair, just some, a couple trip hazards they're going to take care of, classroom upgrades, flooring, et cetera. We may look at doors and signage as well. We talked about the lighting LED upgrade. That one is cost neutral to us, right?
We're trying to.
We're trying to get it cost neutral to us.
We're trying to get it cost neutral through a grant that's called ESIP. ESIP grant. Yeah, so ESIP is a, it makes it cost neutral for us, they apply to the ESIP folks, and they say, sure, go ahead and do it for a given amount of money, and then they, the work is covered, the equipment's covered, and the good thing about that is, we, we, the district, immediately begin to see the savings. Every, every one, every single fixture that's changed yields some kind of savings, and we, we get that right away. So we had a hard time, we've already asked someone who we thought we can do the work, but they're under an ESIP company, so we're going to keep looking.
Okay. So we talked about some landscaping, the boiler room, doors and floors, that's at Roosevelt, right? Or both?
Both.
Both are in pretty rough shape after the boilers are going to be replaced, we'd like to take care of that. The fencing slash gate over here needs to be repaired. The radio repeater needs to be replaced, that's at this building, right? Yeah. And then back also on this building, the garage slash wall, there's some repair that needs to be made there. And then looking forward to larger projects, projects in the future, the two big ones are going to be roof, roof assessment was done, so roofs primarily at Cherry Hill, and then univents at both schools, that's, the boilers are done, but the control systems are still the old pneumatic systems. They're pneumatic, right?
Pneumatic systems in both buildings.
So original to the building?
Likely.
Likely. So, old, so that, those are very large projects that we'll need to plan for multi-year.
I mean, that's millions of dollars in projects that we just named. Some of them are smaller, but the. Some of them are smaller, but the control systems themselves is over a million dollars per building, and, and the roofs are over a million dollars per building, and, so there's parts of the roofs that are younger and older than others, there's parts of the roofs that are in better shape than others based on where they are, so we had that, that assessment was done, and they, they sent us a very nice report that's color-coded, but it's not, it's not the greatest news, we're not sinking, but we, I did ask Dave Cabrera, like, what, what's the fidelity of that report, and how soon do these roofs need to be addressed? So, we can, the parts of the roofs that were red, which is more than 50% in both buildings, we can expect in the next five years that they're going to need to be replaced.
And then, we talked about some recently completed projects, so Roosevelt roof in Jim, part of the roof, that's eligible for the rod grab reimbursement, which we submitted 40%. The Roosevelt boiler, we also submitted for that, we'll get 40% back. We talked about some of the money coming back, investing that back into CDs like we've done in the past to get some interest income. We talked about upgrades to the fields that were donated, partial donations from Regal. We completed the aerating and seating at both Cherry Hill and Roosevelt, and Room 115, that was the, was that the one in between?
Down from Doc Pies' office, that hallway.
Oh, that, yeah, there were 115, probably was completed. And they also power washed both buildings.
Yes.
That's good. And then, they sanded and resurfaced the bleachers. That was the last thing.
Year.
Yeah, okay. We tried to talk about policies, but we didn't, and that was the end of the meeting. And then, we also have personnel and management.
That one, I don't want to have a report already.
That's all right, do you have it? You want, are you okay with doing it?
Yeah.
Okay, I wrote it.
Yeah. So, first of all, I just find the, the transition from the in-depth talking about academics to roofs and doors, both jarring and also impressive.
It's also in the strategic plan.
Yes, yes, just knowledge that's required to run a district, so just kudos to everyone for, for doing that so successfully. It's all part of the job, but it's just, the amount of knowledge that one needs to have is beyond-
I always find it very interesting that, you know, that's part of the classes, you, you have a school, but you have to have the building to teach these academic things in, right? So, if we don't have the airflow, and we don't have the learning environment that the students can learn in, then, then the testing and all the other things and enrichment we do, or doesn't help, right?
And just a granular, the amount of knowledge at a granular level required for, for all aspects is just so, so significant. Anyways, just an aside.
That's what happened here.
So, we met on May 20th from 5:30 to 6:30, Mr. Sim, myself, Mr. Langley, Dr. Bernice, and Ms. Napolitana. We discussed the ABA salary schedule and the hourly employee schedule. The items that I'm, I'm listing are, in more general terms, just due to the nature of the human resources. Contract agreements with non-union employees were discussed. We discussed the requested items for the administrative contract, and due to the length of the above topics, and just like the prior committee, policies were tabled and discussed at a later point in time. The next meeting has been scheduled for Thursday, June 12th at 5:30.
Thank you. I forgot to ask, any questions or comments from board members on either committee report? No. Okay, we will move on to items to be acted upon.
So moved.
Okay, good. You can, we'll move to move on. All right, can I get a motion for item E1, please?
I'd like to make a motion to move item E1.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Alessandro?
Yes.
Mr. Freyas?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Sim?
Yes.
And Mr. Langley?
Yes. Can I have a motion for item F1, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Alessandro?
Yes.
Mr. Freyas?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Sim?
Yes.
And Mr. Langley?
Yes. Can I have a motion for items A1 through 5, I'm sorry, H1 through 5, please?
Let me see. Move to approve H1 through, uh, 5, as stated.
Second.
Any discussion on these? Roll call, please.
Ms. Alessandro?
Yes.
Mr. Freyas?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Sim?
Yes.
And Mr. Langley?
Yes.
Can I have a motion to approve items I1 through 14, please?
Move to approve items I1 through I14 as stated. Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Alessandro?
Yes.
Mr. Freyas?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Sim?
Yes.
And Mr. Langley?
Yes. Can I have a motion for J1 through 3, please?
Moved, as stated.
Thank you.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Alessandro?
Yes.
Mr. Freyas?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Sim?
Yes.
And Mr. Langley?
Yes.
Can I have a motion for items K1 through 8, please?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, roll call, please.
Ms. Alessandro?
Yes.
Mr. Freyas?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Sim?
Yes.
And Mr. Langley?
Yes. Does anyone have any new or old business they wish to bring up?
So, tomorrow, East Bergen County School Board Association's meeting at the Hotel in Hesperus Heights. Usually, May meeting, there's a celebration of recognizing, like, milestones of, for the members and other awards is given out, so I may not be able to make it. I'll try, but the 6, 30 or 45 dinner starts.
Okay.